I'm going to call the Board of Commissioners meeting for May 3 to order. Are you able, Mr. Marine?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's all relative. I think I'm better than Bill.
Oh, okay. This is a public meeting. It's being both videoed and recorded and notes being taken. So, when and if you have any comments to make during the public input or during a presentation, please come to the podium and state your name and address so we have that on the record. Do we have any awards correspondence this morning?
Mr. Chairman, we do, if I can get this out of this great throat this morning. Pleased to take my hat off and congratulate Susan Bauer on receiving a NACO Award for Innovation for the Capacity Building Program.
Great.
It's a great recognition to be able to receive that nationwide and to be the winner of the innovation. So, Susan and all of us, congratulations for that. It's great to have that recognition. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Okay, other acknowledgements, recognition correspondence?
No, I think we're all celebrating them. That was Brian Dislodges' major initiative was to recognize outstanding programs across the country, and so decided to put our name in the hat, and lo and behold, we're recognized.
And did you submit our names to that?
Susan.
Okay, you did.
Yep.
So, I, my suggestion would be that we contact East Oregonian and have a news release.
I suspect that's almost already done.
That's underway, yeah.
Okay, great. All right. Additions to the agenda this morning? Okay, this is a point in time in our meeting.
Do we have minutes?
Yes, we do.
Did I miss minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, I did. Sorry about that.
Well, we missed the plug. You can miss the minutes.
Okay. We have the minutes for our Board of Commissioner meeting for April the 5th. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve those. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Public input, recognition of visitors, and I'm going to ask our visitors this morning simply to stand and introduce themselves as we move through the presentations. If you're scheduled to do a presentation, that will be in place of public input. So, at this time, just for the formality, I'm Commissioner Larry Gibbons, Board Chair.
George Murdock, Commissioner.
Bill Alfreding.
Doug Holton, County Council.
Melinda Sot, Executive Secretary for the Board.
Okay, and out in our audience.
I'm Kurt Thompson. I'm the Career Technical Education Coordinator for Pendleton School District. And am I supposed to tell you where I live, too?
No, no.
Not yet.
When you do your presentation.
Good morning. I'm Susan Bauer from Eastern Oregon Business Source.
Diane Lennai, Director of Administrative Services for the county.
Robert Paul, CFO for the county.
Jennifer Blake, HR for the county.
Okay, thank you all.
Before Kurt became a wealthy administrator, he was actually a tenant of mine some years ago.
Okay. All right. We'll jump right into our presentation. Susan, Kurt, the Schools to Career Program.
Thank you. And again, my name is Kurt Thompson. I live at 43673 Jericho Lane in Pendleton. It's just kind of outside of the city a little bit out by the dam. I'm here just to thank you for your financial support of the School to Careers program. This program, it was kind of the first venture between Pendleton School District and a local business in creating a school-based program. Our mission with this program is to prepare students for future careers and develop a pipeline of qualified people and the needs of our region's workforce. In 2016, when we started, we had 14 partners and nine students placed in job shadow and internship-type experiences. And in 2017, that's grown to 50 partners and still growing. We've had 45 job shadow and internship placements for students. We've also dramatically increased the number of folks that are coming into the schools and serving as either advisors or guest speakers for our programs. So, it's been one of those things when we, when we first started looking at it, our young people just didn't really know what was available to the region. And we found a lot of our top students moving out of Pendleton, not realizing that there was opportunities for them to come back. We've also became acutely aware that a lot of the region employers are having a hard time filling positions. So, by bridging that connection, our goal is to help everybody increase economic development in Pendleton. Currently, we're pursuing grants to support this program through, as you probably are aware, a difficult financial time for educate, education in general. We have about seven grant applications out with the hopes to fund this 100% next year. We have also started some initial conversations with other regional institutions, Pilot Rock, West McEwen. We're also partnered with Nick Gaway in the hopes to further sustain this program. So, I compliment Susan Bauer and Eastern Oregon Business Source for the work that she's done, and I also greatly thank you for your support. I think you're so strong in the program when the community is behind it, and it's also helped with BMCC. Our, our goal for some of the higher-tech jobs is to give students the ability to go into BMCC or an advanced training program, be successful so they can return to Pendleton. We're going to be presenting the options to our school board on May 8th on how we may continue this in the future, but it's a, it's a great program. It's been great for kids, and again, I would just like to thank you for your support. I also brought, and I know, I know we can't do gifts, so this is not a gift. What this is, is this is an example of student work that hopefully you guys have the opportunity to share with others. This is a project that we've been doing that we can take on commission projects for the school, give students a real value to what they're learning, and also provides them with entrepreneurship experience and helps bring revenue into the school for sustaining some of these programs. So, these were designed and produced, not the mug, but the engraving, through our engineering program. Ultimately, what we're hoping to do is connect like the graphic design students where they can design a product, send it to the engineering students where they process and manufacture a product. That will go to the business program where they can market it and take care of the sales. So, it involves several different students and several different programs with a opportunity to showcase what they're doing in the community. So, I've got some black ones and some silver ones. You guys get your pick. Mr. Commissioner Murdock, black or silver?
I think black would be better.
Black?
I'll take the black.
You want a black?
Silver?
I'm good with silver, sure.
Silver?
That's good.
Thank you, sir.
Flash.
No, black or silver?
Oh, silver.
Silver? There you go.
Conflict, Doug, and then you can't say anything.
Thank you so much. So, if somebody sees it, you can tell them where you got it and send them our way, and we've had several, we've had several commissioned products come through the school just the last couple of months, and kids are excited about it, and it's fun to showcase what we're doing. So, thank you again for your support.
Can I ask a question, Kurt?
Yes, absolutely.
The voters passed significant support for Career Ed, Career Technical Ed. That's obviously hung up in the legislature right now and doesn't want to fund it. What do you think's going to happen?
The last I heard, about three weeks ago, allocations were supposed to be made on Measure 98 in June, right on June 30th. That has been pushed back because they have not came to consensus on what level they're going to fund it. The most recent information that I had from ODE suggests that they're anticipating funding Measure 98 at two-thirds, the original allocation. That kind of pushes back our allocation date to probably the end of August, and those won't be made available to schools until September 15th. So, while it's a good, good thing to help support CTE, it presents some issues with us in terms of planning. It's hard to plan for a program in the following school year when you don't know for sure what kind of funding is going to be available until after school starts. As far as School to Careers go, we, we're fairly confident that we're going to be able to have enough funding to start the program next year and roll that out at least at the beginning of the year. We should know in the next probably couple of weeks to a month to what level we're going to be able to do that, and that's part of what we're presenting to our board is kind of an option A, option B, option C. Our board is very committed to the School to Careers piece, and School to Careers is not just a CTE piece originally. It was funded that way because we obtained a CTE revitalization grant from ODE. That was a $391,000 grant, and we took about a quarter of that grant, well, not quite that, about an eighth of that grant to get the School to Careers component kicked off. It's something when we talk about growing programs, the programs need to lead to jobs to be of interest to students. It needs to have that meaning, so that was part of our vision for starting that program. It was kind of an organic process that we partnered with Eastern Oregon Business Source and Susan Bauer, and without her help and without your help, I don't think we would be where we are today. I know our school board is very committed to keeping the program going. It's just, it's unfortunate that we're, we're looking at a state revenue deficit the same year that we're trying to expand the program.
Well, I think it's very important to continue the program, not only from the standpoint of ultimate careers, which is an important aspect of it, but also from the standpoint that it, I think, has a large role to play in increasing graduation rates at the schools. I know that's been a concern, the graduation rates, and if we can keep the students interested and keep them interested in school and why school is important to them in their ultimate career field, I think that'll increase our graduation rates, which is, are very important. I know to the school board and us, too, but I know I was talking at one point with Jeff Holmes, who is the apprentice, the head of the apprentices for the unions for electrical apprentices, and he told me that a school student that came out of school, if he could have a bright student, put him in the, in that apprenticeship program, that in, within four years, it'd be at $80,000, $85,000 a year and have no debt to show for that. So, it's an excellent entree to the rest of a student's life.
Yes.
It's a key, you're a key ingredient. I thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the gift.
Yes.
Kurt, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, you were here just to watch, I would not think. Did you want to?
Kurt said it all, and I would just say thank you for the opportunity to work with Kurt. It's a small piece of huge effort, and it's, it's been a lot of fun, and we're going to keep writing those grants and keep it going.
And I will say, from the economic development standpoint, we're still committed.
Thank you.
Well, the minutes will reflect you had nothing to say.
That never happens.
So, your second chance. Susan, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Kurt. Okay, the first item of business, our board meeting scheduling, rescheduling from May the 24th, reset to May the 22nd due to schedule. The three commissioners will be attending the western interstate region of NACO, and that starts on the, the May 22nd. Actually, it starts on the 23rd, but there is a early morning meeting scheduled for the 23rd by the Eastern Oregon Counties Association.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reschedule the second May board meeting to May 22 at 9:00.
Second? Been moved and seconded to move it from May 24th to May the 22nd at 9:00. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for that.
Do we have to take any action relative to the hearing that was, that we have to postpone or something on the 24th?
Call the meeting order, Doug?
Yeah, I think on the 24th, we just have to make sure that it is continued at that time to the June 7th. That's all we have to do.
And so, with us not being here, I can either call in or?
I'll be here.
You'll be here, okay.
So, call it to order, and for lack of a quorum, we'll continue.
Yes.
Okay. Will the parties know that?
Yes, it has already been. The only problem is that the way the planning department does their notices is that they send out at public notice of the Board of Commissioners meeting as well as the Planning Commission meeting, and so it's already been noticed for that.
Okay.
Yeah, everyone has been notified that the change.
Okay. Okay, any, any other questions on that? Okay, let's move into the foreclosed property auction issue. Normally, I think Paul would present that, but he is out on, on medical leave, so.
Basically, the county took title to 13 new properties due to different property taxes. That along with two properties left over from the 2016 foreclosure are proposed to be sold at auction on June 27th, and so before the board for the official approval and setting of that sale.
Okay, I would announce board order TX 2017-01. I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Will it be adopted?
Second? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt order number TX 2017-01. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Election payable. Dan, are you presenting that this morning?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Diane Lennai, Director of Administrative Services. The election payable is for the ballots for the May election coming up, so it's a routine payable that we have to do minimum of twice a year for our May and November elections, and it's to cover the cost of printing our ballots. And through Writer, Printing and Graphics in Van Doregon, they're the, basically the main printer that prints everybody's ballots in the state. Any questions? It's over our $5,000.
Move with that?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we pay the election cost of $5,000 for election payable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. On the next two, you're presenting those also, Dan?
Correct.
Okay.
The next one is the bid award for the HVAC replacement on the Broadway Street building, which was formerly the Health Building, and then we called it A&amp;D Building. So, now we decide we'll just go ahead and call that the Broadway Building. It's on Broadway Street in Milton Freewater. We have two bids to replace the HVAC there, one from Grossy Refrigeration for a total of $31,000, and the other from Milton Freewater, or not Milton Freewater, Murphy Heating and Air for $19,850. Not only are they replacing the HVAC, but we discovered that the ductwork underneath the building is torn apart and dysfunctional, so mostly heat and air is blowing underneath the building. So, that is what the Phase 2 portion is, to replace that ductwork underneath, so we're no longer just blowing hot air into the crawl space under the building, which will make it a little bit more energy efficient. Plus, we're replacing these with heat pumps instead of just air conditioners and electric furnace, and that will also reduce part of our energy footprint there.
I'm assuming, Dan, the electric furnace part of it was extremely spendy for that particular building?
You know, we were wasting some money there by blowing heat underneath the building, but luckily, heat rises, so it kept it flowing.
Okay. I was talking about the hot air in Milton Freewater, this crawl space.
We're requesting that the award to do the project will go to Murphy Heating and Air for an amount of $19,850.
Dan, I, looking at the bids, there's a difference of about $11,000 in replacing the, the broken ducting. That's, that's an enormous difference. I can't see it broken out anywhere as to why that might be. Do you have a clue as to?
I, I have no understanding why it is different. I know when you crawl under that building, it's not a place a lot of people want to be. It's very tiny under there, so some people, you know, at extra time, extra labor, or have to influence their people more that crawl under there, I'm not sure why.
Their bid may be a thanks, but no thanks?
Yeah. Otherwise, they would have been, they would have been the lower bid, but that portion to replace the ductwork was astronomical compared to the other.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we replace the duct, do the HVAC system replacement, that bid to Murphy Heating and Air for $19,850. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next one's the Main Street Building, which is where the sheriff was housed, the watermaster, and OSU. Currently, it will be just the OSU and the Ministry of Services, Board of Commissioners, and the, our county building there on Main Street that will be utilized. To replace the HVAC system there, we had two bids for that, and again, this one that has gas there, too, so instead of electric heat, they'll be using gas, but we'll be replacing the air conditioner portion with a heat pump, which is more efficient to help heat building too, so it'll help reduce our heating costs plus our cooling costs in the building. Murphy Heating and Air was at $16,450, and Grossy Refrigeration was at $24,880. We received just those two bids. I propose that we go with the less, the less of the two, which is Murphy Heating and Air.
Chair, I would move approval of the Murphy's Heating and Air.
Second.
For $16,450.
Been moved and seconded, we go with Murphy's Heating and Air. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Commissioners.
The rural addressing system, Doug, you're presenting that for planning?
This is coming before the board for a first reading on amendments to the rural addressing system. This was originally done in 1992.
This has to be a public hearing, correct?
Yes, it will.
So, at this time, I will open the public hearing for that portion of the rural addressing, and go ahead. Sorry, I interrupted.
This was first adopted in 1992, and most of the proposed changes relate to a lot of the terms that, for the initial addressing and posted, so all of those provisions are now proposed to be deleted. There was some, a couple of minor changes that Julie Alfred, who's been managing this program, proposed, and then all of the road names have been updated as well.
Okay, no changes on names?
There've been a couple that have additional names to them, but yeah, I mean, there's quite a few private lanes that exist now that didn't in 1992. County roads are pretty much the same.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. We have three members of the public. I don't know if they want to be here in the capacity of a private and public, so any comments? Okay, with that, I will close the public portion of the hearing, and we're ready to deliberate.
Can we continue this to a specific date?
Yes, just, you just go for the second reading, and it's possible for the next meeting if you want to do it, Dan.
Will this be ready for, this is ready for 22nd?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I move, what, did you move?
Yeah.
I move that we have a second reading on May 22nd.
Time?
9:15 a.m.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We scheduled the second reading for May the 22nd, regular board meeting at 9:15 a.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, budget transfers. Robert, you didn't expect to be here this quick, right?
Aye.
We always take longer.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Robert Paul, CFO for the county. I have nine budget transfers for you this morning. Budget Order 2017-45, Fair Improvements. The Fair Improvement Program requires a transfer of appropriations to increase materials and services $70,000 and decrease contingency $70,000. Budget Order 2017-46, Special Transportation. The Special Transportation Program requires a transfer of appropriations to increase materials and services $85,000 and decrease contingency $85,000. Budget Order 2017-47, General County Human Resources. The Human Resources Program requires a transfer of appropriations to increase materials and services $15,000 and decrease personnel services $15,000. Budget Order 2017-48, District Attorney. General County District Attorney Program requires a transfer of appropriations to increase personnel services $20,000 and decrease materials and services $20,000. Budget Order 2017-49, General County Records and Archives. The Records and Archives Program requires a transfer of appropriations to increase personnel services $2,000 and decrease materials and services $2,000. Budget Order 2017-50, General County Cooperative Extension Services. Cooperative Extension Services requires a transfer of appropriations to increase materials and services $126,000 and decrease personnel services $126,000. Budget Order 2017-51, General County Juvenile. The Juvenile Program requires a transfer of appropriations to increase materials and services $200,000 and decrease personnel services $200,000. Budget Order 2017-52, General County Board of Commissioners. The General County Board of Commissioners Program requires a transfer of appropriations to increase personnel services $3,000 and decrease materials and services $3,000. And Budget Order 2017-53, County Fair, Fairgrounds. The Fairgrounds Program requires a transfer of appropriations to increase materials and services $6,000 and decrease personnel services $6,000.
One of those seemed like it was a duplicate.
The County Fairground?
No, the Juvenile.
Oh.
Looked like a duplicate. Did I miss that?
I don't see it here twice.
Okay, I may have just been reading ahead.
Okay.
Yes, only once on the list.
Okay. I did have a question on the county fairgrounds. Since we don't have them anymore, are, are we clearing that fund out?
Yes, so, at this point, we aren't charging anything further to the fairgrounds program. However, there were a few odds and ends that continued to straggle through, and we needed to move some money from personnel to materials and services in order to not be over budget in materials and services.
Okay. With that, do we have any money left in that line item, or will this, take it out?
In?
Fairgrounds.
In fairgrounds, I believe there's probably some money left there, but there's no money in that program in, in particular because it's standalone with the fair, so any money that's there ends up in the fair.
Okay. My question really is, do we need to totally clean that out and get that over into the fair budget?
Well, that's, that's being taken care of.
Okay, all right. That was the only question I had on that. Other questions?
No.
Okay.
Chair, I move approval of Budget Order 2017-45, Fair Improvements.
Second? Been moved and seconded that we approve Budget Order 2017-45. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm ready for the next one.
I think they're all over there.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Budget Order 2017-45. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Budget Order 2017-46, special transportation.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we approve Budget Order 2017-46.
Oh, all favors say aye.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ready for Budget Order 47?
Chair, I move approval of Budget Order 2017-47, general county human services, human resources.
Second. Been moved and seconded and approved, Budget Order 2017-47. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Budget Order 2017-48, general county district attorney.
Second.
Been moved in second, we approve Budget Order 2017-048. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Budget Order 2017-49, general county records and archives.
Second.
Been moved in second, we approve Budget Order 2017-49. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of order number, budget number 2017-50, the property extension services.
Second.
Been moved in second, we approve Budget Order 2017-050. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of Budget Order Number 2017-51.
Second.
It's been moved in second, we approve Budget Order 2017-51. Those don't have a zero in front of them, so... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of Budget Order Number 2017-52.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve Budget Order 2017-52. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of Budget Order Number 2017-53.
Been moved in second, we approve Budget Order 2017-53. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Clever counsel, brought the rest down here.
Thank you.
All right. Personnel policy update.
Good morning, John, Human Resources. I'm just here today with the first set of article, or the first Article 1 in our union policies. It's part of an effort that Human Resources has to make sure that we review our policies. Some of them have not been updated for many years, and it's just good practice with our insurance company and risk management to make sure that we're reviewing our policies and keeping them up to date. So what you have before you here is Article 1, a complete review of those, as well as Articles 2.1, 2.6, and 4.6. Largely, there are no changes to these policies, they're just reviewed, updated language to our practices. Just a couple things I do want to bring to your attention. The probationary period, which is 2.6, we have changed that to bring it into line with our recent negotiated union contracts, meaning that we have a 12-month probationary period for all out-of-bounds positions. And then in 4.6, which is insurance, this is just updating the language on eligible employees to bring it into line with our practice.
Okay, questions? Issues with any of the bargaining on any of this?
Not on any of these policies, but there will be more as we go through that we'll have to vet through the unions before we bring to you for approval.
Okay. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the personnel policies for Chapter 1, 2.1, 2.6, and 4.6. I'll have to ask the chair to sign that.
Second.
Been moved second that we approve the personnel policies for Chapter 1, 2.1, 2.6, and 4.6, and that the chair sign those. Further questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. The last item of business, do we need an executive session? Okay, with that, I'm going to move into Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Alfred, I'll start with you.
Well, I think I've already let it be known that my trip to Bayle, Oregon to talk to Don Gonzalez, the district manager of the BLM, was, I consider a successful trip, pertained to isolated parcels of land that the BLM has possession of and title of that exist in our county, and the discussion took the route that he, right at the very beginning, said they're a lot of bother to him, and he doesn't like the fact that he's got them, and he's very willing to seek out what needs to be done to transfer those properties to local entities. So, he's working on that, that's moving, and that's what we wanted to have happen.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Commissioner Murdock?
I think we already talked about we're going to the Olinger Elementary Dedication on Friday. I think Commissioner Alfred and myself will be involved with Cinco de Mayo in Harmiston on Saturday, and I'm going to represent the county at the PDA annual meeting Sunday in Pendleton.
Right after this meeting, I will be going over to the Walla Walla Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting, or better known as the MPO meeting. Monday, I was in Salem, attending LOWACT, which is the Local Officials Advisory Council to DLCD and LCDC. It's been somewhat repurposed. We've lost a couple members, those have been replaced. We lost Fay Stewart, who took a job with the city of Cottage Grove, so he is no longer a commissioner, and we lost Commissioner David, Mark Davidson, who was not re-elected in the last election cycle. Those two positions have been replaced by Stan Primovich from, I think, Washington County?
Yamhill.
Yamhill County, thank you. And Ken Kestner from Lake County. Stan had a previous meeting and engagement in, for the meeting on Monday, so he was not able to be there, but Ken Kestner made it up from Lakeview.
What does LOWACT stand for?
LOWACT is the Local Officials Advisory Council to LCDC and to DLCD. We're looking at policies and goals and objectives for how that committee functions. I chair that committee now, so that's one of the goals, to get that done. AOC will be having their regular joint committee assignments for this coming Monday, and they'll be involved with the stepping up initiative on Tuesday after our regular AOC meeting, and that will be the G3 Summit, having to do with mental health and decreasing the amount of mental health folks in our jails across the state. And then the 22nd through the 25th of May, we will have WIR, the Western Interstate Region of Naco, and luckily, Oregon, Deschutes County, Oregon, gets to host that this year. I was informed Monday, they have all the help from, well, I don't know if you can say all the help they need, but they have met their financial goals to put that on. All counties have donated something financially, so they were in fact, received more money than they had anticipated, so there are a couple programs they're going to add to that. So it should be a very well-attended and a very interesting program. And then NEAC will be having their regular meeting June, the first Thursday in June, I believe. Hope that doesn't coincide with our budget, budget hearing, our final budget approval.
No, it's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday.
June 7. June 7.
Okay, June 7. So, with that, we hope that I don't have to be the chair of NEAC after that. We're supposed to have Commissioner Steve McClure from Union County step in in the rotation to do that. So with that, any other questions, comments? Doug, anything else for the meeting? All right, with that, we are adjourned.